I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right here motion to approve of the agenda. On the favor, on the yes. The approval of the manager from the workshop session.
On.
Say yes.
On the favor, on the yes. We hear from Rebecca and she'll give us a final answer.
Good evening. A bit short and sweet, mostly sweet. Mostly sweet. If you look at your financial highlights page, the top page, our cash balance at the end of April was right at 5.6 million dollars. We're a couple of billion and two ahead of this time last year. You will notice though from this time last month, it's beginning to dip. We have our bond payment due in two weeks. That will be $260,000 that will come off the top. And that's the school bond payment, so you'll see a big dip. You'll notice our tax collections are beginning to dip as well. Turn to page two, our current year taxes collected for the month of April were $44,462. Prior year taxes were 14.7 and were for a total of 59, right at 59.2. Our DMV including $25,391 in DTS was $34,267 in collections. And if you'll flick to page four, our total collections for real property taxes for year to date are $5,421,000 and some change. We're about $331,000 up from this time last year. And our DMV is 339,000 and that's about $101,000 up from this time last year. Remember when we were talking in budget this morning, I mentioned that this year we have a big windfall because we're getting 16 months into 12. So you'll see that that's the reason. Our real property collection rate is at 94.96, which is just a tiny bit behind this time last year at 95.01 on our total VA of 5.5 million. You'll see that our taxes receivable in the current year that are still out is 267,000. And we've taken our prior year overdue taxes down from about 500,000 to 212. So we've collected about 200,000 in back taxes for years prior to 12 year. Okay, and I've got your worksheet on the back that you can look at. It gives you a breakdown of how that's come down for the year. Our revenues on page five for the month of April were $955,430. Our expenditures were $998,242. We ran at a deficit of 42.8. That's a much lower deficit than we ran this time last year at 502. We are running at a surplus on page six at this point of $2,750,000. This time last year we were at 1.6 million. So that has helped our fund balance. And I'm hoping that we can keep that, we won't keep all of that surplus circling, but I'm hoping we can keep about half of that surplus. And that'll certainly help us as we go through our budget process. You turn to page seven. Our sales tax rebounded. You'll remember last month, I said we took a sharp dip because February was such a bad weather month. We went back to right at 103,000. So we're back in the black on sales tax. We dipped into the red about 14,000 this time last month, but we're back in the black by $994, which means we collected that much more than this time last year in sales tax. So that tells you that our economy is continuing to grow a bit. And then as I mentioned, this last page, you'll see where we stood in back taxes this time last year versus this time this year. And so we have made some pretty good strides in collections, including the 2012-13 year, we have collected in back taxes $326,000. So I know the tax office is continuing their efforts toward collections and working those foreclosures, so I'm hopeful that we'll see some more of those, that balance continuing to grow.
What's the goal on that?
We were hoping to get 300,000. Yeah, we were. So we really all hit that mark. Any questions on that? Then I've just got a budget report, as I was mentioning this morning in the workshop. And I didn't bring this to the board at the workshop. We, at this point, we should have 13% left in our budget. Countywide, if you flick to the last page, we're at 22% as far as the county goes. There are several departments, there's one department, including mine, that we're going to need to do an amendment for because when I was analyzing the budget, I realized that last year I had budgeted for about $68,000 in software costs. We didn't pay for most of that until this year. So I'm going to have to pull that forward and that'll bring my department back into sync. Register of deeds, you'll see an amendment coming probably next month. This is good news because this is showing that properties are moving in Grand County. They've gotten a lot more revenue than we projected and of course, we've had a lot more expenditures back out of the state than we projected, so we'll have to do an amendment there. The jail is going to have to have an amendment at the end because it is running way hot with higher census numbers. We've got a lot more expenditures in that department than what we anticipated. And then I think Mr. Cable has some information about soil and water that we'll need to talk about later. But overall, I'm happy with where we are. I'll be cutting off purchase orders probably Friday. And that means I don't want anything being spent, not spending it, other than the normal everyday expenditures that the county makes. I don't want any new purchase orders coming in for any new expenditures. And of course, the departments are used to be doing that. We always try to do that so it makes it easier to clean up during it. Any questions? Was I sure of that? I did most of my talking in bed. I do have a couple of items for closed session, but it pertains to contracts and also some personnel issues.
Thank you, baby.
Oh, she did do it.
Just have a comment, Simon. Eric, you got anything on this DSS building committee?
I want Claudia Burks to be able to come in and present with the board alongside. Kim's called her around now to come over here with what their request is. I could probably start it off with the DSS building committee met with the planning board for the county. And a lot of discussion around how we should proceed with looking into the need, which has been addressed for a new DSS building. There are really a couple of options on the table where the DSS building committee would like to proceed with the board commissioner's approval to seek an opportunity to get a request for proposal out there and to see what the, what it would cost if there was a demolition in sight preparation on the upper plant. And to see about that, the planning board had talked and probably discussed about obviously pursuing that to see if that's going to be an option for the county. And there was a lot of discussion around also, looking at it as two different ways, if there was, could also be a request for a proposal sent out to see what it would cost to prepare a vacant site that we have in the county at a designated spot up there for him. So we could basically get two comparison proposals to see what it's going to cost in case, you know, circumstances change before he'll plan. I know that Andy, the economic development director of the county, and I are currently speaking with a potential investor who wants to look at possibly putting a business in there. That hasn't, you know, nothing solid on the end. I don't want to give the impression that that's any sort of done deal. But if, having two proposals at hand to be able to know, okay, well, if Plan A doesn't work out, then we have all the information we need for Plan B. And I don't know if Claudia heard any of that, but I want to make sure. Claudia, you want to talk about the DSS building committee?
The DSS building committee met on, in April, April 3rd, and then April 23rd, and then we met jointly with the planning oversight committee. And the last decision at the planning oversight committee was that we would come before you to request a decision from this group on moving forward on the upper plant facility. That was one of the options. There were two options outlined. One was the upper plant facility, removing it and building on site there. And the other was if that was not feasible, there were several other site locations up on that property that were mentioned. And I think that one of our planning oversight board, Keith Eller and Mike Edwards were both present that they, that they wanted to bring it before you for a vote on the decision with the upper plant. I got that right from that day?
And Greg, I believe you said we're looking at RFPs?
We are looking at RFPs.
Two different options.
Yes, ma'am. We really need to get an idea of what each of them would cost. I mean, with the recognition that we currently draw down the 1571, which is a reimbursement from the state. And we would want to look at the development of those site plans in order to have that, you know, that complete package. And, you know, we've basically got two options there as to how that can take place.
I think we're being asked to both, or both, both as the RFPs being be.
Be latter.
Both times that the building committee met, it was their recommendation to the planning oversight board that, one, the Fort Hill site where the upper plant is, be the location of the new DSS because the cost for those to take that back down to, what's that called, David? I apologize. Take all the infrastructure off and back to building capability. That was the number one best interest of the use of the 1571. If that was not the decision of the board of commissioners, then there were other sites that we didn't want to get hung up on that. But it was discussed at that planning oversight board that it would be brought before y'all for the decision on what your pleasure is with the plant facility.
And that's very accurate. I mean, I think that, and I share what we're requesting the board commissioners is permission to seek basically a dual RFP, one for the demolition and site plan at the Fort Hill Hill House, and then the other would be to seek the other RFP to develop a vacant site that we have.
And there were six sites identified, so one of those sites, I've got that.
One of those sites which would be the most logical in case, you know, size.
Well, another size to weigh in on.
Where you have the land directly below the upper plant, it's about five, six acres. You've also got the potential to develop a site there below EMS. And really.
I have those plans available if you'd like to see those. I could go get them quickly if that's something you want to see. There's six proposed sites up there.
All on Fort Hill.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, all on Fort Hill. We don't really own any property that would be listed elsewhere in the county.
But it was the decision both of the DSS building committee and the planning oversight board that DSS proceed with a new facility.
And first step of that would be the RFP, right?
First step of that would be gathering some of the additional information that we need to know what the, what direction we've got.
Do you need a motion? I have a motion that we proceed with that.
You got a motion?
Yes.
I have a second.
Okay.
On the favor, on the yes.
All right, thank you.
There is almost change order on long range check.
Let me give you the, has this changed Kim? I've got the senior center monthly status report real quick. Is that good, sir?
Yes.
Let me do the status reports real quick, and then I'll, I can step into that. For the senior center monthly status reports, while the scattered site housing status report, these are CPG grants 10-C-2231 and 12-C-2417. The senior center status report is the builder's completed documents have been sent down to the state of North Carolina to close out that grant. Everything is on schedule there and is being processed as we speak. On the scattered site housing, the job, the deployment schedule is on schedule. I have a preliminary request that the contractor came in and asked due to the change in the footers and the height of the block foundation for a wheelchair ramp. I go into that next. But I just need a motion and second from the board to accept the monthly performance status report for these two grants.
On the move.
Approve. Judge approve.
Second is the contractor who is building these two scattered site houses. On one of the houses, and well, on both of them, it was, it was asked that they build a wheelchair ramp coming off of the house, you know, that is handicap accessible. On one of the houses, it's not going to be an issue because the grade is the side, the wheelchair ramp is going to intersect up there at a higher grade, so it doesn't have to be as lengthy. On the other side, the block in the section of the house that was, that is designed to have this wheelchair ramp is two feet higher than what the contractor was asked to bid.
Will it come out of that fund?
It will come out of that fund. Yes, sir, USDA. Absolutely.
We have someone in, say, or somewhere that we'll grant for, don't cost anything.
Well, I don't know about that. This was just in the contract documents that the contractor was asked to bid on.
It was in the contract?
Yes, so that he was asked to bid and build a wheelchair accessible ramp.
But that was not included in his bid?
It was not included. Well, it was, he was asked to contract, design, and bid on a wheelchair ramp that is three feet off the ground, based on the block.
No, no, I was hoping that today. It's just for the.
It's high on the backside.
This falls back to the discussion from last meeting.
Right.
About them raising the foundations.
Yes, they are.
Because they have to dig deeper, which.
So this from out here?
No, this is the one on long range.
This is the one on long range.
And I know then, when she says there wouldn't be no more change orders, I know then she was wrong.
There would have to be for this wheelchair ramp. And the, you know, in building a wheelchair ramp, you have to understand the ADA grade is a one and 12 inch. So if you add two feet onto that wheelchair ramp, you're talking about an additional 24 feet length in order to make that accessible, right, baby?
Yes.
And in order to make that work, you know, 24 feet's a long way, you know, with another 36-foot ramp, there would have to be transition and landings and things like that to make it work. The difference in the material for 24 feet of additional bedding is about $2,861 in order to cover the cost. This isn't coming out of, per se, the county general fund or anything like that. It's being completely spent out of the, out of the USDA funds. But the contractor, to avoid the circumstances we had last time, where he went ahead and completed the work, he wanted to make sure that this was out there and upfront to board commissioners to say, you know, if you want a wheelchair ramp, it's going to take this much more material in order to do that.
Well, I know that lady has a power, I make a motion.
I have a second.
I'll second.
All approved. Judge approve.
All right.
Greg, just one more. In the future, when these bids are let, given the fact that we hope to get more of these type of funds, is there some way to make that bid all-inclusive of whatever? Like, most people bid, they take care of whatever comes up.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I'm committed with. And if we could specify that the bid's all-inclusive, whatever is to be remedied, then I'd feel much better about it.
I mean, there's no reason that she, if she went in there with it, she didn't know she was hand bid.
Well, I agree. I mean, this is not a request to build a new ramp. This was put into the bid proposals upfront. They knew that they were going to have to build a handicap accessible ramp. Now, due to the timeframe of doing these kinds of projects, whenever we let the bid for the construction of these houses, many times the site work and the site prep, even in cases of the demolition, has not been completed.
Most often it isn't.
Most often it is not. So you're trying to get these, all of these things happening simultaneously so this person is not displaced from their home for a great length of time. The easiest way to do that in the past, and you know, of course, I was a general contractor for years in building and bidding on these types of projects, is to lay and even playing field out there for the general contractors and say, okay, we realize that the footer situation can change because you have some.
Bid accordingly. That's not, that's not.
You have unknown site conditions.
I know you do. But the really big job, he has unknowns all the way around, but he's got to bid, whatever's all that, whatever he's not running into.
I mean, I understand, but a lot of times, you know, from a, you know, from a building a house, you know, doing that in the past, what has worked is, okay, all the, everyone bidding on this house is on a even playing field. Tell them to build a three-foot crawl space with the recognition that site conditions may not allow for that three-foot crawl space. And.
What'd you say?
And so, you know, whenever you're looking at a piece of ground and you've got to build a house on it, you know, if you put a price out there saying, look, I'll do this for, you know, just example, $2,000, and, you know, you're told to dig, you dig, and then you hit water, and then you're told you've got to get an engineering certified that. There's nobody knowing upfront that it's going to run into those sort of cost overruns.
I'm aware of that.
And both contractors get the same house, same houses?
Yes, sir. It was the same house, so each of the three bids that were turned in on both houses, there were the three contractors who bid on those houses. They all slumbered.
Okay, it's just nothing negative to the contractor. It's just that if we could bid and make everything all inclusive, then we wouldn't be going to the USDA funds, which also are used for renovations for other homes and rides and roofs and things for the people in the county that they deal.
I mean, and I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying from a contractor standpoint, looking at it, and you know, if you've got a big unknown, then you know, you could actually wind up bidding a lot higher because you have to cover.
I think that would probably be the case for all bidders.
Yeah. You'd have to really have the numbers upfront to make sure that you, you covered yourself on that. If it wound up costing less, then it actually pulled down additional grant funds that you wouldn't necessarily be for that. So that's a lot of times the balancing act that you wind up with those sort of situations. But, you know, the, this contractor's got other houses for us in the past with the CPG, never had any issue that I'm aware of.
It's not about, I'm not saying anything.
Oh, I know that.
The contractor at all.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. I recognize that.
I think they do a great job.
Absolutely. Any other questions on that? Releases and discoveries?
I'll make a motion, wait to get them.
All approved.
Kim, I don't have this information on the bids.
It's laying right here in the two envelopes. It's the floors. And the one insulation is the one that's by a set. It's the machine by.
All right. The bids for cleaning the floors of the EMS base, we have two bids. The first one that was received is from Leon, can I say that? And that bid is $1,814. The other bid we received was from Ronnie France, and the bid for there for stripping the waxing floors, EMS bases, $2,150. And the other one is for stripping the waxing as well, I just wanted to say.
Motion except the lower bids.
So, second?
That would be Leon Allen.
Okay.
The motion second, all approved. Judge approve.
The bids to try and sound proofish and insulate. The bids to try and sound proofish and insulate the, the sweeping quarters of the EMS base, uh, came in. There, there was one bid proposal received from a company called Airtight. They're out of Haysville, North Carolina, and, uh, it's an injection wall foam in existing interior deficient walls. And that bid came in at two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And that, that was the only bid that we received.
I might come on you to say it.
Second.
All approved. Did you approve?
Okay. Next on the agenda, um, we have a request from the Department of Social Services, uh, for standalone PCs. There'll be four of them, and the amount is three thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. Claudia, she's still in here? She would like to, uh, talk before, let you know where the funding sources come from. A lot of safe funds involved here that we don't wanna necessarily leave on the paper.
Um, we have to submit a request to Hank Bowers, uh, who is with the state, if we are planning to purchase hardware. And that has to be in before the end of May, and the costs have to be spent before the end of May. We have received approval back from him that we can purchase the equipment. And we have received, um, information back from our local business liaison that it could be included in our memorandum of effort, and we could use for e-funds that might be left on the table for that purchase. So we have the approval of the state, and it's just on a timeframe. But I did wanna say too, that we're looking into and we're aware of the den client and, and that information there. So if something changes within the timeframe, uh, that would be a possibility. But we're really tight on our, um, turnaround time of May thirtieth. So the three thousand eight hundred and ninety-four twenty-four is equipment that would be purchased for economic services and child protective services. I've already spoken with Taylor on these. It is the standard PCs, but they would, they would convert to the den client too if it becomes out of timeframe. And those would, until their life is extended, they would still work with the system. They may or may not before the coming of those. I just request your approval on us making the purchase based on the funds that we do have available.
So.
Motion second, all approved. Did approve.
Um, the next item, uh, we've already covered up there on item number eight. That is the, uh, the SSS question received with our FPs, uh, to demo in, uh, Fort Hill site. Next on your agenda is a, I need most of a second to, uh, approve the polls that were taken. Uh, the first one is the donation of county personnel providing kind services to help about what can't society in the red light of life. Uh, the second one is the agreement that we were finally able to get together with Eastern Valley Cherokee Indians to get the Phase One Archaeology Project underway with the county. So we can have that out of the way in case we decide to do, uh, future, future construction. That, uh, it was unanimous to vote yes. And we also have the poll for the letter of support of the NC Deer Farmers Association with a, um, unanimous yes. And the fourth poll was the financing of the new ambulance. Larry, do you know when they were number of the day? So May twenty-seventh, next week, we're, uh, hopefully, if we just arrive, we'll be able to get the, the financing of the ambulance, the lowest finance rate of, uh, the county, and it was voted in the poll, uh, was to go with the rate of one point seven nine percent for the financing of that ambulance.
It was Carolina.
That was-
It was one point nine nine. You see there, one point nine nine. And all of the origination fee, the original thing was one point seven nine, with no longer origination fee. And our citizens was two point five, two five, three thousand.
What was the vote on that?
It was three to two. Is that right, you?
Well, I personally would like to, I mean, I don't think, but I think we ought to go with. Carolina community bank, although it is a little bit higher. I know a lot of people were very, and I never thought that when I voted the first time, when I voted Kim, and then I called her back. And then I voted for Carolina community bank. I think that we need to do what best we can, completely plan it for a hundred and some dollars over the period. And, uh, I'd just, I'd rather save what can.
Okay. So you wanna add that under, uh, under new business? Or you wanna just have that discussion now? How would you like to proceed?
I'd ask you to go with it.
Okay. So in regards to the poll regarding the financing of the ambulance, uh, it was a, a poll vote that, that passed for me being two to three of two. And I would encourage forward discussion as you say, sir. And you, you may have to, uh, to have that now and see what the board's play there is. And I'm not sure, Becky, where are we in the, uh, I have not spoken, they did not comment last week.
So we not made a commitment anywhere there?
Um, I, I let them know that y'all had voted that it would, it probably couldn't have been more needed, you know, than it can. So we really know, we're not signing yet, but I'm gonna-
Well, I'm, I'm good with either way to go. Of course, I always say, if, if we have a business in the county that we can conduct business with, that's where the jobs are. And four hundred dollars over, um, what is it, three years, Becky? Four hundred dollars, did, four hundred, was it four eighty-eight?
Four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay, over a, a three-year period. And if it'll en- enhance one job in this county, we're more than like that up. It's just my thoughts on it.
Yeah, we're more good to some, on certain occasions, otherwise. But that's just my opinion.
I like to save money myself. I like to save money. If that was my four hundred and some dollars, I would be going somewhere else. When this taxpayer is four hundred and some dollars.
It is. And, and, once again, if, if we lost one job in the county, we'd lose more than that. But like I say, I, I normally look at, at the lowest price. But in thinking about doing the business in the county, I'm always weighing that out. But, I mean, the vote passed, I'm, I'm looking at that as a priority.
So, uh, just proceed along with the polls. Okay. Okay. Can I get a, uh, a motion in a second to approve these polls that were conducted since our last meeting?
Second. All approved. All again.
Okay. Um, next on the agenda is, uh, a request to approve the recommendation from the RDA board to lower the board, uh, member number to five. And the members, uh, that are recommended for this board are Jackie Ives, Billy Brown, Connie Orr, Andy Cable, and Dale Wiggins.
Go move it.
Second. Motion second, all approved. Did approve.
Okay. Uh, next on list, we had a request for pool fees, uh, from Graham County Schools to be at two hundred dollars for the season.
This is our after-school program in our summertime. Y'all usually just give them a bulk price, uh, for them to use the swimming facility. Now, there's an extra group this year, I think, of fourteen kids. So she did want to make that clear that we didn't have last year. It may be, uh, a little more than that, but I was thinking that's what she say of it.
Go move that price.
Second.
Okay.
Motion second, all approved. Did approve.
All right. Uh, next we have, uh, need a motion in a second and approval to accept the HCCBG funding request for two thousand fourteen fifteen. The amount changed back to what they originally submitted, right, Becky?
And, well, we had to add the senior meals and the jail meals to that, that line items, and that changed it just a little bit.
But it's, it's all, should be good. Much.
Second.
All approved. Did approve.
All right, next on the agenda, we have the, uh, appointment of the DSS board members. And I have on the agenda here, uh-
That's supposed to be reappointment?
To reappoint?
Replace?
Malika, Michelle does not want to serve, so she wants replacement for her. But reappointment for Evette Hooper and, and Phillips.
And Michelle?
She did not want to serve again.
Do we have anybody that would be to consider?
Who's on there now?
Uh, you've got, uh, Michelle, Evette Hooper, Ann Phillips, Keith Ballard, and-
Jennifer Bar.
Or is this something you'd like for us to, uh, run into and check on?
Can, can we go ahead and, and reappoint Ann and Evette? And then you can bring in some candidates or whatever that we can talk about for that board?
We have to June thirtieth.
Yeah, I think we'll look at that board, because that might be a board selected. Or it might be-
Uh, it's a, it's a county decision.
It's a commission appointment, she was a commission appointment.
Yes, she did replace. We can hold on her and then just reappoint her.
I might motion with one third.
I had somebody talk, we got that done, didn't we?
Second.
All that motion, all approved.
Do you want?
Ann Phillips and Evette Hooper.
Evette Hooper. Just put them back on the board.
Twenty second, Bill.
We got a motion in a second.
All that second. All approved. Did approve.
Um, now I have a new, new and old business. Does the board have anything that you would like?
Would we leave Michelle?
It's just an open, she's still on there till June thirtieth.
Oh, we'll have another meeting before, it has to be, Bill. Somebody asked, would we can do it another day, that's why.
The next item that I was asking for the board commissioners, this is sort of a new business that sort of cropped up into last week, uh, is the county extension office, not extension, I'm sorry, the Soil and Water Office, has called and they are concerned about the funding levels as Becky other than two in her financial report. Based on, uh, the smart fusion and the, uh, the appropriation of the county, there's about roughly, I think, around fifteen hundred dollars left for the extension office. The current setup, not to keep saying extension, Soil and Water. They're right next door to each other, so I go see one, I go see the other. The, um, the situation with Soil and Water is, is different than other county apartments. They, they, they manage all their own funding. The county makes an appropriation to them every year, much like we would to say Tri-County or someone like that. And then they have other funding sources that, that make up the, the difference. We basically pay for half of, uh, the extension, or the Soil and Water Director's salary. We cover their utilities and insurance, things like that. I have, I, I have met with the Director of Soil and Water, uh, office here in, in the county, Bill Corbin, and one of his board members. And, you know, they're, they understand that the, uh, these circumstances provide for a, a very annoying scenario for them. I asked him to provide me with a, um, what he would need to finish the year out in funding. And I have that from the board. He said that funding appropriation, four thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-two cents, would help them to complete the year. I explained to Mr. Corbin that this is, uh, you know, any sort of amendment or anything like that that would have to come from the board commissioners in order to be allowed. But like with many appropriations that the county board approves in the budget ordinances that we passed, it is, uh, it is up to those, those areas that receive appropriations or then was approved from the ordinance. And to be honest, uh, we, we don't manage their funds from the county managed office or finance. They, they completely manage their own funds, and, you know, they, they provided us with as much information as, as, uh, we requested for, so we can take a look at it. But I want to hear from the board to see if you all would like to, uh, approve any additional funding or leave this open for some additional discussion.
Becky, what, you're way gone to the last kid?
Forty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars. I've just been digging, I think. Hopefully, that's right, I deal with quite a few numbers. But, uh-
Yeah, and, um, basically how the funding works is, um, Mr. Corbin's salary and benefits, this, whatever we fund, the state will match. So, but not on the assistant. And so, if we, you know, if we, if we, probably at this point in the game, anything we would fund would not be matched because they do it at the beginning of fiscal year.
Do we know why they don't have money? Weathers. I heard there's some uncertainty as to whether or not the, the request that was made for the assistant, like as far as, you know, how many, you know, versus what was approved and, and allowable for that amount of money to provide the amount of hours within that office and whether or not there was additional hours work. Like I said, we, we don't manage the checkbook for the Soil and Water Office in the county.
We don't have access to that.
Their total appropriation for last year's budget was forty-three, six, seventy-two, which was the same amount as the year before and the thing about the year before. We cut it, when, it was probably before this administration, we cut it about five percent four years ago when we were, we were trying to get everything back in line. And it, and the county was in such dire financial straits. But that, that includes a twenty-five thousand dollar salaries line item, and then of course the FICAN, and we pay their insurance, their, their, uh, they're on the county insurance plan. And so right now, they've only got about, like Greg was saying, about fifteen hundred. Like, would you float the vote for their insurance for the rest of the year? They, they wouldn't pay for anything else. They took their fourth quarter allocation real hard in the fourth quarter. And now they're saying they don't have enough to make payroll and pay their payroll taxes and, uh, any of their other out-of-pocket expenses.
Do we know whether their board might have give raises or anything like that?
Their question was asked and it was said that they have not, their board has not provided any raises or anything like that. That they are just, you know, if there's ever can be raises or anything like that, they try to look at that. But I'm unaware of that circumstance being an outside department.
Maybe we could have some additional discussion on this. And Mr. Greg or Becky or both of you get with them and see where the problem.
I had, when I spoke with them week before last, I had recommended that they come to at least the budget workshops early in the budget process so that we can hash out some of these things and get a breakdown of how much of the 25 is being used for Corbin's salary versus the assistant's salary. Because as I said, you know, whatever we appropriate for his salary is getting matched where the other is not. And I'm hopeful, you know, I think it would be real fruitful if, like, a board member and then they came so we could go through in your presence so you could have a full understanding too. You wouldn't be getting it second-handed through us. Sometimes we get lost in the translation. So, I hope, and I think I had put that on my wish list as well, that we have quite a bit of discussion on this particular budget, during budget. That doesn't solve this problem for now, but I think if we could see early on in the workshops, they would know, I think you would have a better feel on how to proceed on this issue for this business.
Yes, and I made a request that, you know, I told them that I'd bring it up for you all tonight. And I asked them to, they come and in that way they can answer any other questions. But I, you know, I've been out of the office most of the day in various other meetings and things like that, so I'm not sure. There's probably going to have to be something as Becky said, we need to bring that Soil and Water in during budget hearings and be able to handle that upfront rather quickly because they are in a situation to our knowledge that is, based on the information we've been given.
I'd like to know what the board thought about it. You don't want to give it to them.
Yes, sir. Well, they provided a breakdown here, but I've just gotten this and I haven't had a chance to dissect it and go through it with Becky. And we need to really take a look at it. Because I'm just looking at it from first glance, it seems that, I'm not sure that this is enough to get to the end of the year. So, in some ways, I've got a few more questions than I do answers.
Why don't I go to them? More?
I don't mind a bid to give them a call. And that way, we could go ahead and get it taken care of.
I would, or give them. If they needs our funds.
I think we got a whole lot of discussion on this particular thing, last budgets, I can remember. Just I remember.
Can't remember. But seems, seems... Seems as though we did, but I don't ever remember there being...
I think if we fell into the same category with the library and Tri County.
Yes, sir. I believe you're correct.
I think the gentleman that was killed in the car accident, he came and spoke to you guys. Do you remember that? I think he was a district supervisor. With the Soil and Water, that's when they came to speak. He spoke mostly, more so than they did. They're not...
I think he came, like, at the public hearing or that admission meeting. And it was really far along in the process. And that's why I made that recommendation, so you need to come early. Because once we get pretty well ready to lay out, it's really tough to make those changes.
This, I don't need a motion in a second, the board has already directed a constructus letter. I just want to make sure you all are fine with it.
That's all I have. Forward.
On the... Let's see, if they want me... On the deer farm.
Yes, sir.
The support that we gave them, that we needed to send. They also related to each Congressman and Senator. And government.
Okay.
Office of North Carolina. They're really giving them a hard time. And they're doing that, I think we ought to do that in support.
Okay.
Deer farmers going under the agriculture instead of under the wildlife because they make an all kind of rules, give all kind of tickets. Just have to be... They killed a herd of deer up here that there was no need to. I know a farmer down in Telco, he's got piles of them. They're not that strict coming down there.
Yes, sir. Some of our state senators and governor.
Yeah, and Congressmen and Senators of the state, yeah.
Yes, sir. We live...
I mean, if I tell out of there, I have... Just loud. I'll make that a form of a motion.
Same.
Motion checked, all approved. Get approved.
And I have, I have a copy of the little news flyer that they sent out regarding the three hundred acre acres that was paying for Tri County, that parcel tract to go along with that letter. So, everyone's fine, I'll go ahead and get that in later. Thank you very much. We do have some items to close session. I'm not sure if board would like to have a five-minute recess power going on in close. But there are some items to cover and process.
Any comments on the session? Got a motion on close session?
Close.
All approved.